Welcome to the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Ray with Vineyard Church giving the invocation. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for inviting clergy to come and open in prayer. That's an honor, and we really appreciate it. Would you please join me in bowing our hearts before our Creator God? Heavenly Father, in faith, we come to you to lift up this city council, that you may reward them with every gift of wisdom, knowledge, and grace in conducting the affairs of our city tonight. May this council's decisions reflect the best interests of your people and govern rightly in your sight, that our city may continue to flourish and grow. For we know, as written in the Holy Scripture, without faith, it's impossible to please God, because anyone who approaches him must believe that he exists and that he rewards those who earnestly seek him. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ray. Cindy Lee, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Gordon?
Here.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Seven presents zero.
Councilmember Frelick is present. Councilmember Frelick is present.
Thank you. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Mayor, I just want to ask, do this, you know, according to process here. Item thirteen A, I, at some point, would like to ask Chief Evers to explain something about, you know, an issue with the box, the box hub fire department training, just for informational purposes. I don't, you know, at whatever point that's appropriate this evening.
Okay, so not pull it, but just explain it later on?
That would be.
Can do that.
I think it's okay when you go to approve the consent agenda to have Jerry come up and answer any questions you have prior to approval, if that works, yeah.
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes with all ayes. Next, is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Very good. We'll go right into the consent agenda, and before we get into that, Chief, would you like to come up here and answer Councilmember Gendrich's question?
If I could, Mayor, I just, you know, I briefed Chief Evers on my way into chambers this evening. I wanted to head off some questions that citizens or council or whomever might have about, you know, why are we spending ten or twenty thousand dollars or whatever, you know, budget amount or so forth for these fire boxes? And when we could be just using training on, you know, condemned houses, condemned buildings and so forth, why are we spending that money? So the rationale for these boxes, I guess, is what I'm looking for, Chief, and for informational purposes further, so.
Yeah, that sounds good. Jerry Evers, a fire chief, and that's actually a good question. This has been in our strategic plan for a while to get training boxes that you can actually do live training in. The way that we do it currently is that we get abandoned trailers from Ripley's, and then there's a cost for them to bring them down and set them up. There's a cost to us to make them safe to burn in. We have to put in drywall on the inside and do a lot of work and do vent holes so it's safe, so you can ventilate it, so people are safe on the inside. Once it's burned up, we have to coordinate with Public Works. Public Works will come down, utilize their equipment, and get rid of all the metal and the scrap, and utilize a street sweeper, and then we get it off to the junkyard. And so you do that over and over and over, the costs associated with that, this is, this thing's going to pay for itself, where we can use it over and over, and we don't have all those other additional costs. There is live fire training that is required for firefighters, and so, again, this falls right into our training plan of having these Conex boxes that we will modify and put indoors and windows and ladders. You can move them around, set them up, so it's like a real-life fire training. So it's something that we need, and it's something that we'll be able to utilize for a long time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chief. I think very informative and a good answer for citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And before we proceed, I see the new individuals that are kind of heading up the farmer's market are here also, so welcome, you guys. Appreciate it. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items ten A through C, items eleven A through K, items twelve A through D, items thirteen A, and item fourteen with bills totaling three million five hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars?
So moved, Gordon.
Motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Now we'll get to the public hearing. Fifteen A is a public hearing to declare city-owned real estate as surplus and authorize the sale of property through a sealed bid process. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
Motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is a fifteen B. It is a public hearing on the approval of plans and specifications for Phase One of the Fulham Avenue reconstruction project. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Of course. Yep, yep.
We had a citizen raise his hand, or, I apologize for interrupting, but you're...
Does anybody have a comment?
Can I speak?
Yeah, you bet.
Max Kaufman, sixteen oh nine Foster Street, Muscatine. This Phase One of the Fulham Street project, we've addressed that over and over for the last three years, but we never seem to get any further than addressing Phase One of the Fulham Street project. I would like to see it expanded out a little bit more than just the concept of Phase One, because I live in that general area, right at the top of the hill there, and I'd like to know just what the heck Phase One of the Fulham Street project is and what it amounts to, as it will affect me, other than Phase One of the Fulham Street project. Can we expand on that a little bit here tonight, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Director Steiman, would you like to come up and... Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Steiman, Public Works Director. So Fulham Street reconstruction is planned to go from Kindler Avenue to Hauser Street. We broke it up into three phases for several reasons, one being the cost to do the project, and two is to work it into the schedule when school is not in session, because that's a highly-used thoroughfare for school. So the Phase One of this project will begin this year, assuming it's approved. It will go from Kindler to Green Acres Drive. It will reconstruct the pavement on Fulham Avenue and add new sidewalk on the south side from Green Acres to Kindler. Phase Two, then, will go, will be the following year. It'll go from Green Acres to the west. I don't have that exact street intersection for Phase Two. It hasn't been designed completely yet. Wherever the money, we figure takes the money out for that amount, and then Phase Three would be from wherever that point is to Hauser Street. We're hoping that by Phase Three, we would have a decision made on the mini roundabout at Hauser Street, so if that was something that we could include in that project, we would certainly do that and combine those together. But we broke it out into phases so that it will fit into the school, school out. So the project is designed to start the day after school is out, the following Monday, and then it should be done and wrapped up for that, for that construction season before school begins, so that we have as minimal disturbance as possible for the school system. Yes, Vance?
Brian, just to confirm, I mean, normally you have a public meeting to review the design and elements, and I would imagine, once you get this moving forward, you'll do that.
Absolutely. Typically, what we'll do is set the public hearing, hold the public hearing, we'll go to get bids, we'll have a contractor on board, then we'll meet, we'll have a public meeting so that the, that we can present the contractor to the public and vice versa, so they'll have a line of march, they'll have a schedule, and they'll be able to present that, discuss that with the public, and answer any questions that may arise, because they'll be the ones that are building it, so they'll have the answers to how they're going to build it, whether, which way they're going to start, and all that type of thing, so.
So that it never does go from Cedar up to, say, Buell?
Not at this particular time, no. Funding-wise, we're, we concentrated on the area from Kindler out to Hauser because of the, the condition of the street there was the worst part. And for those of you at home, the question was, does it not go from Cedar toward, to towards Buell? And the answer, I just gave the answer, kind of a backwards order, but that's, that's the way it is. And, and we always, you know, we have our street matrix, we, we measure the streets, we evaluate them continuously, and as they come up on, and funding becomes available, we work on those. We've done a lot of patching on Fulham from Cedar to Buell, but it hasn't made full reconstruction process yet.
Councilmember Louis.
This question's for you. One's an FYI. I had a resident call me the other day and say, are you aware that the junior high's doing some reconstruction or additiony, add-on, and how's that going to affect regarding some, these big trucks getting into there to do what they need to do, like pour concrete and things like that?
Yeah, we'll coordinate all that with the school district and their contractors as well. Yes, we do talk to them, so.
And then I'd also, like, for a recommendation going forward, once we start this project, is to put a sign on the Fulham to say, no large trucks coming down that street, because that, I think that's what's really eating that street. I live on Fulham, so I think that's really what's eating up the street, because, I mean, they come all the way from Fulham down to Cedar Street. They're, they're trying to miss that, that roundabout on, on Cedar Street.
Oh, yeah, we could definitely evaluate that as well. Yeah, okay, we'll evaluate that.
Just a note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for the public hearing? Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Frelick.
Second, Louis.
Second with Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Councilmember Osborne, sorry, I missed you. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is seventeen A, is the second reading of ordinance updating designated truck routes, Title VII, Chapter eleven, Section six of City Code. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is seventeen B. It is a resolution declaring city-owned real estate as surplus and authorizing the sale of said certain real estate by sealed bid process. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council?
This is Councilman Jeff. I have a question.
Yes.
There's a member of the public that inquired if this affected Southwest Corner, which is currently a park. I do not believe it does. Is there, is there any connection to this and that park above north of the F W?
Mr. Fangman is shaking his head no.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is C. It is a resolution approving plans and specifications for the Fulham Avenue Phase One project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Frelick and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion with public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D. It is a resolution rescheduling a public hearing to approve the plans and specifications for West Hill sewer separation, Phase Six. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is E. It is a resolution setting a public hearing for 2024 consolidated funding application and public transit infrastructure grant application. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Frelick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F. It is a resolution setting a public hearing for the maximum tax levy for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Louis.
Second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is G. It is a resolution authorizing special assessments to private properties. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Frelick. Is there any discussion with the public? Any discussion with council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Frelick?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is H. It is a resolution to set a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 annual plan amendments to the public housing admissions and continued occupancy policy to be held May fourth, 2023, at six P M during the regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. Councilmember Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
And Louis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is I. It is a resolution approving a sidewalk or street cafe easement agreement with boonies on the avenue for the purpose of outdoor dining. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Frelick. Is there any discussion with the public? Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Frelick?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a request to approve the declaration of the nineteen eighty-eight Smeal fire engine as surplus and, and to authorize the donation of the engine pumper to Ukraine to assist in serving the citizens during their war with Russia.
So moved.
And before we get to motions, I'm going to have Dr. DeWinter and Mr. Roberts come up with Chris Mason and Ms. Lilly. And I know you guys would like to present something to them, so, yeah, thank you so much for coming, you guys, and I'll have you approach the podium, please.
I'm Naomi DeWinter, and I'm here tonight in the capacity of President of the Rotary Club of Muscatine.
Mark Roberts. I am also a board member at the Muscatine Rotary and am here to talk a little bit about what the Rotary Club is doing, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to speak here. But what we've done over many months is have a number of different meetings about Ukraine, from learning about ambulance contributions from the city of Muscatine by Gary Ronshammer and also having some refugees come to our Rotary Club meeting and meet them. As a result of that, one of the things we did is agree to contribute supplies to a future family that immigrates here to Muscatine. And we've also had refugee, refugee assistance operations and the Quad Cities come down and talk to us about what they're doing. So a number of different things, and it's taken a number of our weekly meetings, very important to us and very important to Rotary internationally, with a lot of Rotary Clubs in Eastern Europe supporting the effort. So what we're doing here today is presenting a check for seventeen hundred fifty dollars to support the, getting the ambulances and fire equipment to Ukraine. It's a small contribution, but from talking to Chris Manson and his daughter Lilly, who's very eloquent, just want to make sure that you guys have that and use that, I'm sure, to the best benefit. I know you wanted to make some comments, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, if you're Ocal, first just want to thank the Rotary for the contribution. It really will mean a lot, and I'll, I've got a PowerPoint here in a minute, I'll give you a little summary, but I can just tell you that we are sending another nine ambulances and, at a minimum, four fire engines to Ukraine here in the next month or so, and so we will definitely use these funds either to help pay for the shipping or to either buy tourniquets or chest seals or some other things that we'll put in the ambulances. So thank you very much for the contribution, and I can assure you, we'll send you pictures to show it, but we can assure you that the, the contribution will definitely be put to good use. So thank you for that opportunity.
Absolutely.
And it's okay, do you want me to just go into seventeen J, or how would you like me to?
You, you're, it's open to you, and Ms. Lilly's going to speak.
First, I'm going to introduce Lilly, and, and again, you'll see in this, after she's done talking, I'll explain why I've invited her here, but go ahead, Lilly, I'll let you start.
Good evening. My name is Lilly Manson. My dad and I are the founders of U.S. Ambulances for Ukraine. Thank you for the free for fire trucks that you're, sorry, I mean, ambulances that you have donated us in the past, and thank you for considering giving us a fire truck. All of them will save lots of lives and put, and be put to good use. Now you hear some stuff from my dad.
Good job, Lilly.
How do you follow up with that?
You can stay up here, Lilly. Go ahead, you can have a seat. I don't know if the, there's a PowerPoint that's been put on there, I don't know how we, do I press something to pull it up, or something here? Oh, right there, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Right there, sorry about that. If I just hit it? There you go. Can I just hit it in there, huh? So the reason, what's it, there, it is right there, right? So the reason I had Lilly come up and, and actually speak, it wasn't just because I wanted to come to a city council meeting, I actually used to be a city councilman in other communities, so I, I do appreciate the time, and, and it's, it is good to be in a, in a city hall to talk, but the reason I actually had her come was she really was the inspiration, and she really is the co-founder of U.S. Ambulances for Ukraine. The, the way this whole thing started was back in early March of 2022. I'd watched the news with, just like any of you would, and saw the images coming back from Ukraine, and my daughter would watch it with me, and, and I would try and turn the channels so she wouldn't see some of the things that we would all see. And eventually, early on, she said, I could see what was starting to bother her, she would start to ask to pray, you know, before dinner or whatever, when we were saying the blessing. And then eventually, at one point, it was still, I could tell it was still bothering her, and she just looked at me and said, hey, Dad, is there anything that we can do to help? And so that got me thinking, I used to be, I used to be, I used to be a volunteer firefighter, I was in the military, and like I said, I've been a city council member in the past, and I work in healthcare, I work, I'm out of Peoria, Illinois, for OSF Healthcare, and kind of thought about it a little bit, and just after seeing some of the images of the ambulances, for example, being destroyed, I landed on the idea, well, maybe I'll see if they need any ambulances, and if we can get them full of supply, get, well, one, if I, see if I can get one ambulance to them, and see if they need that. So I called the consulate, and I called them on a, on a, I don't know, a weekday, seven, eight o'clock at night, left a message, I said, hey, I don't even know if you need a message, I said, hey, I don't even know if you need this stuff, but if you do, let me know. And I was expecting a call back in two, three weeks or something. I got a call that night, like 11 o'clock at night. Hey, yeah, we need an ambulance, we want it full of stuff, when can you get it here? And I was like, uh-oh, I better find an ambulance. And so, you know, the first question from Lilly was, you know, what can we do? Luckily, I was able to reach out to an ambulance provider in Central Illinois, and the second, the second question that I got back when I asked was, what do you need, gas or diesel? And it was those two questions that really got things started. So basically, on March 29th, we put our first ambulance on a 747 full of supplies. OSF and others filled it full of supplies, like I said, the ambulance was donated from AMT of Central Illinois, and we were on our way. And since then, as I mentioned, well, I just mentioned my pending shipment, but I can tell you from that day, from that one day, that one question, we now have 28 ambulances in Ukraine and one fire engine. Three of the ambulances that we have are your ambulances. And we wouldn't be here, there's different inflection points in this whole thing. Getting that first ambulance was a big deal. I went to Ukraine in Easter Eve, early April, and came back and somehow got in contact with Gary and then the chief and had started having some conversations. And when I got, when we started talking about the three ambulances that you had that you were gonna be surplusing, that got us, that got me over that kind of hump. It got me from 1, 2, 3, 6, 7 to, we were like 10, 11, 12, and people started to notice. And so I just wanted to really come here today to say thank you, more than anything. I mean, I, you know, in this whole, this whole thing that, this whole effort, I've now been to Ukraine four times since March. The first time I went, I went to, I went to the western part, I went to Rivna, a couple hours from Belarus, fairly safe, nothing really happening. But trips 2, 3, and 4, we were driving convoys of ambulances into Ukraine. And I personally have been convoys with, in fact, we took two of your ambulances in, and I handed them off to people, I handed them off to hospitals that were gonna take it, and actually, I just, I just saw it again parked out front, you'll see a picture in a minute. I've also handed them to another, another group that's operating east of Kharkiv, closer to Bakhmut, which is where the combat is. And again, that ambulance is also serving in a hospital-type environment, taking care of wounded, not even soldiers, but just wounded people and evacuees. One of the things now, I, what I've gotten and I continue to get is I get letters of requesting ambulances, I'm now kind of known as, in Ukraine, as the ambulance guy. So I'll randomly get these letters, and sometimes they'll call me the president of OSF, sometimes they'll call me some other things, but I'm the guy that gets ambulances, and so I'll get letters. And these are just some of the examples, asking for fire engines, asking for ambulances. And one of the letters you see there on that far right is for a military unit near Kursan. That military unit, the commanding officer asked for an ambulance. We said, yeah, sure, we're gonna get you one. And we, sure enough, we're in the process of getting them one, and we got them a good one. Unfortunately, by the time we got it to them, he had been killed in combat. And those are just the realities of what we're dealing with. And again, you know, I share these stories, I share this stuff, I know all of you know this, people in America know this, and they really, again, they've risen up. I've got, like I said, we've got 29 vehicles there right now, we've got another nine ambulances that we're gonna be sending, another, like I said, right now, we have four fire engines, not even, not kind of the one that you guys are talking about or considering. And people from all over the country have, you know, there's a homecoming parade where my daughter got to sit in the front of the engine that was donated. I drove that engine all the way down to southern Ukraine, half the time in a winter, in a snowstorm, and it's now, it's now in Mykolaiv, running calls and responding when the Russians dropped phosphorus in the area. So that's, that's that one right there that was in a parade. You see your ambulances right there, there's a couple, or there's one of them at least as we were loading them up and getting them ready to go. And here, like I said, your three ambulances are all over Ukraine. You've got one in the north, near Rivna, at a regional hospital, it's a 700-bed regional hospital. You've got another one that's east of Kharkiv, and you've got another one in the south. And these are all, these are all your ambulances in Ukraine doing their thing. And so like I said, we've sent, we've had seven shipments so far, we're working on shipment number eight. And again, I just, there's, that, the top picture on the, top picture on the left is us staged in Poland, that was in October. And basically, actually, all three of those pictures are us going into, from Poland into Ukraine in October. And then again, there's that, the bottom picture is your ambulance, that was in January when I was back for a fourth time, and it's running calls and operating and it's serving, serving the people. The other two are also October. And then again, this last trip, we actually dubbed it Operation Florian, we tend to name it after saints, Florian's the patron saint of firefighters, and since we had a fire engine, that's what we named it. And again, in this shipment, we had 10 ambulances and one, one fire engine. And again, you can see, there's again, a picture of your, one of your rigs in Rivna at that hospital, and we've also, we dropped off a second ambulance at that hospital because unfortunately, if the Russian, if the Russians decide to do some, a counteroffensive or I guess another offensive from the north, Rivna's gonna be the speed bump for Ukraine, and that's where they're gonna come. And so they've got these two ambulances to serve, not, to serve not only the wounded that might occur, but also just the population right now. And this is really what it's all about. There's your, you know, there's one of the fire engines we dropped off, you know, the chief will relate to this, and so the law enforcement, one of the things, you know, being a firefighter, you used to love to do is, you know, go to schools or have kids come to the fire station, they crawl around your equipment. These kids unfortunately are all war orphans, they are in Kiev, they've lost both parents. In some instances, the mom was, was, in some instances, only the father had been killed, but they'd all been displaced. And so we basically said, you know, would the kids even want to crawl around the fire engine? And we were, you know, we brought some chocolates and stuff, and chocolates and a fire engine do wonders, and the kids had a great time. But these are just, you know, these are our rigs in different locations, you know, throughout the country. So what's next for us or where do things stand? I've got four fire engines right now. Obviously, you're considering or thinking about your fifth, you know, your fire engine. And again, I used to sit as the dais, just like you are, and I understand, you know, you gotta make good decisions with your stuff, and I'm not here to twist anyone's arm, or I'm just here to say thank you for what you've given us already, it's had an amazing impact. The only thing I can tell you is if you do decide to give us a fire engine, I will get it to Ukraine and I will have it running calls, and it'll have a good second life that's meaningful and will be doing something for people. And I can tell you right now that, that, those four fire engines right now, you see that bottom one on the left is going to Odessa, the one on top, the 75-foot snorkel's going to Kharkiv, the heavy rescue next to that is probably going to Kursan. And again, that heavy rescue is going, it's gonna go with a lot of extrication gear because they're dealing with missile strikes, artillery, building collapses. The fire engine underneath that, that engine that says 705, the one below that, that's going to Kharkiv with the 705 engine. Again, it's gonna be east, and then if you're, if we, if you are, if you decide that you wanna go ahead and surplus your engine and give it to us, it's going to Kursan. I already know that, I have, I got the letter from the fire department, I know what their need is, and like you said, I've got some other extrication equipment that's been donated, we've got other stuff, we'll put it on there and that's where it'll go. And I think, oh, and just, this is, I wanted to end with this, this is the need, this is why there's a need for fire engines. Unfortunately, the Russians have a habit of doing what's called a double tap, so they'll go ahead and they'll strike, they'll wait for first responders to go in, and then 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 40 minutes later, they'll hit it again. And usually, you know, you can be lucky and avoid some of that stuff. On this particular day, they weren't lucky. Fortunately, no one was killed as far as the first responders, there were people wounded, but several different occasions, I mean, firefighters were killed at the state, at their stations, or again, when they do these kind of like double tap type situations. And that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. I think Lilly would be too, probably.
Any questions for Chris or Lilly? Thank you so much. Lilly, wonderful job. Naomi, Mark, thank you guys so much also. And Chief Evers, I'll have you come up here, if that's okay? And I know you had a couple of things you wanted to share, so thank you.
Yeah, again, Fire Chief Jerry Evers, I know there's a few questions at the last minute in regards to the action item for declaring the surplus and then if council decides to, to, wants us to declare surplus to donate it to the Ukraine efforts. Some of the due diligence that we did initially for this is that, of course, we've reached out to all of our, all of our volunteer fire departments around Muscatine to see if this is something that they could utilize. Remember, this is, we purchased this in 1988, actually, the title is 1989, so, you know, 34, 35-year-old engine. We reached out to all the mutual aid partners, and this is actually older than the majority of the vehicles that they have. No one was interested in either us donating it to them, and they definitely weren't interested in buying it. So again, we did do our due diligence to see if there is someone out there in our, in our community in Muscatine County that would be interested and they're not. We also reached out to the vendor that we've been purchasing fire trucks for. When we write the specs and put it out to bid, like a lot of times, we try to see if we can get, if they'll buy it, you know, if we can do a trade-in. And again, there's just, there's no value for this, and so I asked him, I said, can you, can you give me, give me a value? Because initially, you know, a couple of months ago, they were saying, you know, maybe you'd be able to get $1,000 for it, you know, maybe 1,500. I asked him if he could give me something in writing, he reached out to some of the auction houses. There's, right now, there's three, three fire engines that are online on the auction houses, and they're actually four to five years newer than, than our 1989, and they're listed for $1,000 to $1,200. So again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to share with everyone, again, we did do our due diligence and to see if anybody was interested in this, they're not. We also have, actually, a couple of the other comments that we have is that there are a couple of fire departments that, that, they're not interested in our fire engine, but they're interested in donating equipment to put on the fire engine if it goes over there. And we also had a couple other fire departments in the state of Iowa that has already donated gear and equipment to go over there. So more, more than happy to answer any questions that you would have.
I was gonna say, thank you for digging into all the information. Councilmember Brockert?
Chief, I was asked by a citizen this afternoon if there's any tax benefit to the city or any monetary, and I'm not aware of any. Is there anything that you may be aware of?
That would be a good question for Nancy.
Since we're a municipality, we do not pay taxes, so there wouldn't be any tax incentives for us. And with the small probable value, and we, the item is fully depreciated.
Thank you.
For a while now.
It seems rather unfair to spend $750,000 for a vehicle, and now it's worth $1,000, maybe.
We paid $192,466 for this in 2018.
Well, inflation, you know.
Councilmember Gordon, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Jerry. I don't have a question for you, I have more of a statement. Just as a reminder, Muscatine is strong in our belief in sister cities. I mean, citizen diplomacy is very important, not everybody plays in that game, but we have a great group and we have a sister city in Ukraine. So just keep that in mind. So we're not just going in and giving a gift, we're helping people that we're dedicated to helping. So I just wanted to bring that up to remind people that we have a Ukrainian sister city.
Any other comments, questions? Yep, we can hear you.
All right. Yeah, the things that are going on in Ukraine are horrific. We certainly want to support the people in Ukraine and their war with Russia, and, but we do have some folks in our, in the city of Muscatine that are, this is not, this question is not in opposition, however, they would like first to make sure that we have offered it out to volunteer fire departments, which briefly talked about. I got two questions in that area.
Mayor, a point of order.
What specifically?
Councilmember Osborne?
Engine or newer engines?
Councilmember Osborne? Just a second, we're gonna, we're gonna actually get a motion before we start discussing.
A motion in a second, till you discuss what's on the floor.
I move to accept.
So is there a motion to approve this request as submitted? Motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hopkins. And now, is there any discussion with council? The floor is yours, Councilmember Osborne.
Okay. So just a couple of questions. One, what were the specific replies about this engine that made it not useful to volunteer fire departments around us? And what was the length of time that they had to respond? Or, you know, how many did not actually respond at all? Well, you know, assuming that we've got a response and they're not interested, or just some questions around that is what folks are asking about.
Could you paraph, I couldn't really hear what he was saying, if you could paraphrase and I can, I can answer.
Basically, it, Councilmember Osborne, you were kind of cutting out a little bit, but could you just quickly paraphrase what you just said? It was kind of choppy.
Oh, what volunteer fire departments to reach out to? How much time does it give them to respond? How many responses do we get?
Okay, initially, we just reached out to Bluegrass Fire Department a couple of months ago, just to gauge interest. And the initial feedback we got from them was that no one's gonna be interested in a 35-year-old engine. And so at that point, that was kind of, you know, when we looked at what the value was, no one's gonna, no one's gonna want it, that's where we were at this point. When I saw the email today with the questions, we actually have a group email text for all the volunteer fire departments in Muscatine County in our Mutual Aid Association. As soon as I saw the email from Carol, I sent it out to the mutual aid group. I asked for clarification and feedback, letting them know that this was important and that I needed it before the council member, or before the council meeting tonight. I got feedback from Monsanto, Conneville, Fruitland, and I'd already heard, heard feedback from, from Bluegrass. So that was the feedback that we got was, you know, it's, it's an old one, it's older in what they have, they weren't interested. If, if, if you know of someone that I don't know of, I'm more than happy to, to reach out to them. So I kind of leave it at that.
I know you mentioned a few that did respond negatively and not in favor of taking it on, but what was the return rate? How many did not respond? If giving out an email today, you know, and there's no response, that doesn't necessarily mean they don't need it, so I'd like to understand that a little bit more.
Okay, I guess the ones that didn't respond would have been West Liberty, Wilton, Durant, and Adalissa, off the top of my head.
So we had three responses, but how many are copied on the email? How many fire departments have copied on the email?
It's a group email list, so all the fire chiefs that are representative of the fire departments are in the group email list. And it's just a Muscatine Mutual Aid Association email list that's through the city of Muscatine's email server. It also went out to the sheriff and the emergency manager who's on the Muscatine Mutual Aid Association.
Yes, that, that went out today?
Yes, this afternoon.
Yes, this afternoon.
All right. The comment was, I'm concerned, and, you know, I've gotten feedback from the public that, you know, perhaps up to a month of time might be appropriate to allow for a proper response, something like that. My personal recommendation might be to have it on the agenda, two weeks from now, in that, in that meeting for us to vote. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on that.
I personally, I personally have, have no objections holding. Like I said earlier, if you, if a citizen told you that someone's interested in it, please let me know, or if you know of a specific fire department, please let me know. I personally have no ill feelings if you wanna postpone and hold it. The only thing was is that the next, it wouldn't make the next shipment, but that's okay. I mean, if, if you wanna hold off, again, we just looked at, you know, the value, maybe $1,000. We reached out to people, everyone, you know, it kind of laughed a little bit, you know, about, no, we don't want a 35-year-old engine that you're declaring surplus. So again, I'm, I'll leave it, that's why, that's why we have it up for council, is we need to declare it surplus first, we would like to donate it. If you wanna wait till the next council meeting, I have no objections on waiting.
Councilmember?
Marking it surplus, I'd like to see a little bit more time for responses to allow for more responses.
So I think if you want to, if he wants to make a motion to postpone the item, he can do that as a subsidiary motion to the main motion that's on the floor, and if it, if it gets a second, then you can debate that. If not, then you'll continue to debate the main motion.
All right. So are you making a motion? Councilmember Osborne, are you making a motion for, for that specifically? And if so, could you?
Yes, I'd like, yes, I'd like to make a motion to declare, to amend the proposal to declare a surplus, however, waiting at least two weeks to the next meeting to allow sufficient time for departments to respond.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Osborne, is there a second? There is no second. So now we'll go back to the original motion. And I apologize, do we just make a motion again?
You already have a first and a second on the floor, you can go ahead and, unless, unless there's additional discussion, you go ahead and vote.
Is there additional, is there additional discussion, everybody?
Can I just make one comment?
Of course, yes.
My only comment is I think the police, or the captain has made captain, chief, sorry. I always get you guys confused, sorry. Demotion, promotion. Sorry about that. So I think the chief has already explained to us that, you know, he's reached out, this is a very old vehicle, I would be concerned, especially being in healthcare myself. If we're gonna give it to another, something that we're not gonna use here, we're gonna give another county or left give another county a leftover, and what happens if that breaks down and then now our citizens here, you know, are at jeopardy? So, I wanna say thank you for doing your due diligence on that, Chief, and definitely would be in support of donating it to Ukraine.
Thank you, and I just wanted to add one more comment that I didn't say earlier. From what we hear, if someone actually does buy an old fire truck from an auction, usually what they're buying it for is to restore and put in a parade, or union fire departments will buy them, and they will outfit them for a funeral procession where they can put the casket in the back for firefighters that are killed in the line of duty. But you're not seeing 35-year-old vehicles that are being purchased and placed in service. So, again, I appreciate the, the nice comment, so thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Councilmember Osborne, is that an aye or a nay?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is K. It's a request to approve declaration of city firearms as surplus and to authorize said firearms to be decommissioned and traded to Mitchell Arms and Ammo in Muscatine. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon, and a second by Councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is L. It's a request to accept a $650,000 downtown revitalization grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a facade program in the 200 block of East Second Street. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. Perfect, thank you. Is there any discussion with council?
This is John, I have a question.
Yes.
The grant is for specifically the East 200 block of, of, of Second Street. However, a communication went out through the Chamber and through the city, looking for applicants to provide improvements that sounded more generally across, across Muscatine. Are these two different things, or?
Yes, Councilmember Osborne, those are two different things.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is M. It's a request to approve a contract in the amount of $30,000 with ByState Regional Commission for Project Administrative Services as required by the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Downtown Revitalization Program Grant. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is N. It's a request to approve a contract in the amount of $125,000 to Martin Gardner, Gardner Architecture for design services required for the Downtown Revitalization project, program. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is O. It's a request to approve a contract in the amount of $48,000 with IMAG for engineering services for the Clark House elevator modernization. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is P. It's a request to approve a contract in the amount of $10,500 with IMAG for engineering services to upgrade the site lighting at Sunset Park Apartments. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is Q. It's a request to approve a contract in the amount of $32,500 with IMAG for engineering services to repair the Clark House parking deck. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is R. It's a request to approve modification of the city sidewalk policy to allow courtesy sidewalks. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second.
Thank you. And then a second by Councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none.
I, I think, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but, you know, we're going to re, we're going to go ahead and install some courtesy walks, right? Some people that felt like they were unjustly treated in this situation, and, and I'll tell you what, this is a, this is one of the best things we've done in three years and two months, or whatever, that I've been, you know, doing this. But I had a request a year and a half or so ago from a person on Park Avenue. They wanted to replace their courtesy walk, doing some landscaping out in front and so forth, and they were told that they couldn't, okay? So I think we should discuss, I can do so in your individual, individual meetings, you know, or however we wanna go about this, but that fellow that had, wanted to replace his courtesy walk a year and a half ago, if he put that courtesy walk, could have put that courtesy walk in for 200 bucks and was told no. When we're replacing courtesy walks on Fifth Street and so forth, and now he finds out that we're changing our code, and he can put his courtesy walk in, and now it costs him 400 bucks. I think the city needs that, owes that citizen 200 bucks. Because he was told no, and in an inappropriate interpretation of what that courtesy walk situation is. Think about that, council, and at the right time, whether it be now or whatever. But if you can justify through the dates on your building permit that you wanted to put in a courtesy walk a year ago, and you were told no, when those people on Fifth Street are going to have their courtesy walks replaced, that's an injustice, and that citizen should be treated the same way. So, that's my two cents on it. We can take it up again? I don't want it to do anything to, you know, make a suggestion to jeopardize this code change, but just think about it, council. It's an injustice, okay? So however we proceed, Mayor, Carol?
Do you want me to address that at all, or?
Yeah.
So my initial thoughts on that would be if, if they were removed, and Brian can chime in if, if I get any of this wrong. If they were removed as part of a city project, we will come back and replace those, at our cost, right? So West Hill, there may be others, but that's the one that comes to mind, at our expense. If you've requested a permit to repair this outside of a city project, I don't know how many, it would depend on how many we're talking about, and I would wanna consider what precedents we might set. Because there are a lot of, of issues that come up that the, our thinking evolves, the, the case law evolves, whatever might happen, and we may have a different answer tomorrow than we did today because of that evolution. I would be concerned about what precedents we would set by going back and addressing that. I guess Brian has something additional.
I just, I just wanted to touch on the, the instance of Park Avenue in particular. Park Avenue is a state thoroughfare, so that would be done in state right of way, so they may have been, I don't know the specifics of this, but they may have been told no because the state would not allow that in their right of way. I'll have to look at that. But that may be the difference between that.
It's two houses up from where Park Avenue curves.
It's not on Park Avenue?
Pardon me?
Yeah, I thought you said it was on Park Avenue.
It is on Park Avenue.
Okay, but not Park Avenue, Highway 92, Park Avenue, then?
No. It's, this property is two houses up from where Park Avenue curves and turns into East Mississippi Drive.
Okay, that might be, that's a different instance.
And I don't remember the situation, but, you know, we, I was contacted, and we contacted you on.
Yeah, I would say we hail those.
A million things to try to remember, I understand that, Brian.
I would just say we look at those probably case by case.
I agree with that, yeah. We could, if you know of it, and we just say to the public now, if you have been denied a permit for a courtesy walk in the past, or if you know as council somebody who has, have them contact us. We can talk about what circumstances existed at that time and talk about a potential, you know, negotiated outcome. But to blanket say we will replace them all at our expense, I would not be in favor of that.
Any other questions, discussion?
This is John.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I agree with John. This is a great proposal. I really appreciate staff's effort to make this happen, and it looks like they did a lot of, a lot of footwork and, and to make it get us this far. I just got a couple of questions. So this, what I really want for clarity, if we vote yes for this, this changes the city code, allowing that courtesy sidewalks will be replaced by the city if they're removed as a project, and also retroactively goes back to the current west western separations, four and five, to replace those courtesy sidewalks with the U2. Is that, is that correct?
The policy change itself, Brian, you go ahead and come up, is about how redefining what a courtesy walk is and when you can and can't replace it. That's what the, and it's not a code change, just to clarify, it's a city policy, not a code change.
That's all I was gonna say. This is not city code. It's, it's a, it's merely a policy of how we operate, so we wouldn't change city code.
But does, does this retroactively go back and replace the, if we vote yes, we are saying that we want to retroactively go back and replace those courtesy sidewalks that have been replaced in the sewer separation project?
I would say if, if council agrees, we would offer courtesy sidewalks to those people that were affected by West Hill. If they choose, if they want them put back in, we would put them back in. If they do not, we would not. That's how we would approach that.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Any other questions? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is S. It's a request to issue a purchase order to Motorola Solutions in the amount of $101,110.12 for the purchase of 24 body worn cameras, one in-car camera system, and one 192 terabyte server. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Lewis?
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second, please.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is T. It's a request to approve signing the MPW Solar One retail adder contract at the 50% subscription level with, which provides the city the opportunity to participate in the upcoming solar program to bring local renewable energy to the community. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is U. It's a request to approve declaration of city vehicle as surplus and to authorize said vehicles to be traded through Carl Chevrolet, Inc. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I have really nothing to share except for a kudos to Jody and her team regarding getting the nuisance housing down. It's so nice to come down off William Street and look at Cedar Street, and that house that had the hole is gone, and there's grass. There's like a grass covering on it, so thank you to all of you for all you do. That's it.
Councilmember Hopkins?
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Frelick?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Gindrich? Or Brockert, well, we can't, we can't skip you. Councilmember Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Gindrich?
Yes, quickly, I'd like to reaffirm to the Muscatine public that I voted no to the Kansas City Southern Canadian Pacific Agreement. I'd also like to wish Iowa good luck tonight. I don't know what the outcome is right now, but how, you know, how fortunate, or how much fun is it? We have the Iowa women, Iowa State men and women, Drake men and women, so March Madness is great, and I do have to, it's, it's hard to swallow, but gosh, I hope the Hawks can pull it out, Dennis. That's it.
That's recorded forever, you know?
What'd he say?
It's recorded forever.
He takes his hearing aids out.
Councilmember Osborne, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing tonight.
Cinda?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Cinda Mr. Web?
Thank you.
Well, some good news, it was, been in the newspaper, but with RagBri coming through, we have plans to start the kickoff meeting next week, so that's really exciting for our community. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.